Because I get my papers so screwed up. And this is Phantom Fireworks. Oh, no, this is. This is that farm. And then this, I don't know what this was about that. Oh, I know.
The January fifteenth Planning Commission meeting is now called to order. If everybody could please rise for the pledge to the plan. I plead with you.
To testify in the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, and so since it is the new year, first sort of business is the reorganization of the Planning Commission. And so I guess would somebody like to make a motion for?
I'll make a motion rather quickly that we nominate Sherry as the chair again this year.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, and then for a vice chair, does somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we nominate Brian Almany as vice chair.
And is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Alright, and then up next we have approval of the meeting minutes from December eighteenth. Were there any comments from anybody on the Planning Commission? Alright, well then I will make a motion for the approval of the December eighteenth twenty twenty four Planning Commission minutes. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, and then we have public comment. Does anybody in the audience have any comment to start off with? Okay, then we're going to move on to the subdivision and land development plans with for Phantom Fireworks. Where we have a modification request, so if the representative for that could please come forward and give us an overview.
Good evening. Blaine Markle with James R. Holligan Associates. And with me this evening is two people from Phantom Fireworks. Jack is the one. Do you want to enter just say your name there real quick?
I'm the director of development. I'm a real estate guy with Phantom Fireworks. I've been with them for twenty-five years. I'm from twenty-two stories to get some of the projects. So, and then your two planning commissions.
And I'm Brian Bush, the regional manager for Phantom Fireworks in this area. Starting off at our local store here.
So then the plan that you do have before you again is a preliminary final land development plan for Phantom Fireworks at eight thirty-six East Forest Avenue. It's where the old true value was. It's that property. So the purpose of this plan then is to obtain new approval associated with the modifications being made to the storage building east of the retail shopping center. Yeah, so they're just going to be doing their improvements, whatever is necessary just to get their retail store in. And we'll go through the plan then. Do you have a point?
There's a mouse right there.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Oh, yeah, and down below.
So this evening, again, we are here just strictly for modification request. We're not here in regards to the plan, but we did want to discuss this with yous. Get your thoughts and ideas on the waivers. Jason, friend of mine of our office, had attended the staff meeting for this. And so I went over that with him just to get an update, but you'll see on the plan what the waiver requests are. And I guess probably the best thing for right now is just to go down through all of them and then we'll discuss. And I'll show you some of our issues or concerns that Phantom Fireworks has in regards to what the ordinance is actually calling out for. The first waiver would be four oh three submission of a preliminary land development plan. And I believe the staff was on board with that and in the nature of this plan. You know, I think all of yous know from previously, there was just a plan done when the Harbor Freight went in there, Sherman Williams. So you're familiar with that property there. This is again just minor improvements to, let's see, well, yeah. So right, right here is that existing building that I'm talking about. Where Phantom Fireworks is proposing to go into on this lot. So it's relatively minor with what we're doing, but so that's the first waiver. The second waiver would be plan orientation. And again, I can't see it there, but if we put it true north, it just distorts the layout and then we would need multiple sheets. So we were just asking for that waiver. That's pretty, pretty typical. The third waiver would be section, would be six twenty-two, two B. And that would be the traffic impact assessment for non-residential. And again, there was significant upgrades and changes done with the last plan that came in with that Harbor Freight. So I think staff supported this waiver for this use with those improvements. And it was my understanding that also they would want an agreement prepared just to better explain traffic and that sort of thing. This Phantom Fireworks, this store, as you probably know from the existing store that's on the other side of East Forest Avenue right now. Their busy period is really only like five days prior to July fourth. That's their busy time when everybody comes in. So as part of that agreement, that's where they would explain how they're going to have special traffic control in there. And if they need to use their overflow parking, and that is right here, off to the side right here. That's a stoned area there that could certainly be used if the actual, all the other proposed parking spaces, the delineation that we're putting in is not sufficient. But clearly you can see by the plan that we have way more proposed parking spaces than what we actually need or is required. So that was that waiver. The, the next one would be six twenty-two, or six twenty-one, I'm sorry. And that is parking lot requirements. And we're just asking for modifications of those requirements due to the rehabilitation and reuse of the existing parking lot. This parking lot right here is already in to date, actually everything's in, the building and all that. The only significant improvements to bring this retail store in is they are putting a loading dock right over here on this side, so that would all be cut out for the loading dock. And then we have just a proposed sanitary sewer line there. And what is hatched right here, this dark hatch that is actual proposed paving then after putting in the improvements and tying in. So everything else is really in, except for obviously all of this line striping. And we'll get into them waivers then later. Then under that six twenty-one waiver also, so we would be asking for a waiver of all of those conditions under that except for the lighting. Sky, or Phantom Fireworks is proposing to put lighting all around the parking lot. So they will illuminate this and brighten things up and it'll meet the ordinance and will provide photometric plans and all that. But under that six twenty-one then, there's also landscaping there that, that talks about that. And then that refers you back to ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh six. And you'll, you'll see that on the modifications of waivers list that we have on, on the plan there. And so there's four, four things there under that ordinance. The first is one ten point three, and that's in regards to buffer strips. And what that says there, I don't, I don't even think that really applies. But all of the surrounding properties around Phantom Fireworks is commercial except for on the northern side of eight fifty-one. It is zoned agricultural there, but I don't knows if that even applies because eight fifty-one divides that. Totally isolates that. And so if, if we had that situation, we would not even have to have a buffer strip for that. But, and, and we'll come back and talk about, further discuss these here in a second. The, the second one then, under that ordinance was one ten point five. And that was for perimeter buffer. And again, I think that was already addressed on the last plan where it's, it's kind of cut off right here. It would be, they, they put a big, you can just barely see it. This is arbor vite eye that, there you go. That buffer does go right across this front here. So that, that's that. The next is one ten point seven individual building site landscaping. And we are asking for a waiver of that section. Currently because the existing, what's out there is this whole section right here on this side of the building. This is all existing concrete that's currently in, and it has a roof hang over top of it. Obviously Phantom wants to keep that in. They can utilize that. That would be their walkway. So that's why we're asking for that. And then over on this side as well, we're just proposing to have a ten-foot paved section that would provide for pedestrian access over there as well. But we don't want to put in the six foot. I think your ordinance requires six foot minimum width for some of those planting beds in that area. They would like to keep it all open for, for traffic, the way it currently exists right now, if, if, if they could. And then the next is one, 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 and that's parking lot landscaping design. Again, this parking lot is already existing. And we hate to come into, you can see how to meet the ordinance and meet your criteria. We just showed where these islands would be typically. We just had it, since it's already paved and it's in fairly decent shape, we just had it crosshatched off just to delineate that area. But we were not proposing to put that curb or do improvements there. And, and we'll further discuss that as well. And then the next waiver was six oh three point six concrete curbs. And again, that would be concrete curbing along the front here of this walkway. And then what I just talked about with all the curbing on all these interior islands here, as well as potential curbing on the outside. And the big thing why we don't want to put curbing on this site is the fact that it's already been paved. We don't want to mess up the existing drainage that's currently out there and the way that things are working now. Because certainly that will, I mean, it may not, I mean, we could do it, but we may have to put additional inlet storm sewer, all of that in when the site already is, is properly functioning. And the big thing with the curb here along this front face right here, along this building here, and along this building, this concrete that I already told you was in. The problem is there that if we go and put that curbing in, now we're actually going to be dropping down the grade, say an additional six inches to drop down. The problem is, is that we get pushed out into this existing parking lot too far that Phantom actually has to even tear out the existing bituminous and blacktop in order to properly transition back into what's currently there. And it just adds quite a bit of excessive work. And we just want to get your thoughts on that if we can get a modification not to put that curb in and do all those improvements. And I understand that at staff, the big thing came up that there was a change in use on this property. And that's really why it was told that they wanted to put this curb and, and do some of these improvements. But, but in this situation, I mean, with this, and I know the way it was before with all of true value. It was really all like retail, if you look at the site as a whole. I know it's not per individual buildings, but if you look at the site as a whole, it was all retail. And the, the ordinance with all the criteria that's in that and standards that you have just creates a lot of hardships as far as comparing new development, say, and the use versus someone that wants to just come in and rehabilitate and reuse a site to get that used back in. So that's what we wanted to mainly just talk about. Again, any specific questions I can answer or and or somebody from Phantom is, is here also to hopefully be able to answer your questions. And just looking here. Yeah, it's, it's just pretty complex. So I don't, I don't know if, if Todd wants to go through each individual one, or you want me to further better explain or?
I guess first question we have, can you elaborate on number four, or just this parking lot requirements?
That was section six twenty-one, correct? Yeah, so we would be asking for a waiver of all of those things within that because, and, and matter of fact, here I have it. You want me to go through each and every one of these?
So you're talking about the curbing?
And the islands?
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're talking about everything that's in that except for, except for, I said, the landscaping, obviously that kicked us into that other ordinance that you have. And then the lighting that's in that section then as well. Phantom Fireworks is proposing to definitely do lighting to light up this whole facility. And prior to this meeting then also, just so you know, we were out at the site looking at some of these critical areas. And yeah, with Phantom, I mean, they're planning on basically doing the whole outs, exterior facade of the building. They'll be putting new lights up. I mean, they want a nice looking retail store. Kind of like the retail store looks across the road, which you know, looks, looks very nice. So, I mean, their ultimate goal is, is just to use this existing building and just to rehab it for their retail store.
If, if I could maybe just run down through these.
Yeah, that's fine.
We're going to try to vote on each one as we go along maybe because it's quite a few.
Well, if you don't mind, let me run through, I'll identify the ones that staff support it and the ones that staff does not support. And then you guys can decide where you want to go from there. And before I go, just so everyone's aware, when I mention staff, that consists of Jeff Schu, which is our township engineer, a representative from York County Planning Commission, Keith Hunnings, a zoning officer, myself. We're the four that make up the staff when we review these plans, so.
So real, real quick again, so when we were talking, so just keep in mind that, again, we think some of these that we have to do just creates such excessive work. Is it really necessary? We want to get your thoughts and ideas. We are planning to go before the Board of Supervisors then also similar to this. Obviously, we would be asking for your recommendation or suggestions and whatever that may be. We'll then, I mean, they'll have it and we'll go through the same discussion again. But we're, we're looking for advice to, and whatever you definitely feel needs to be done. I mean, state that and not that it would be objected to, I'm sure by, by Phantom. But we just want to see what we can, what we have to do, or what we possibly don't have to do. If you see that it is kind of unnecessary, so go ahead then Todd, sorry.
Alright, I'll just run down through these and I'll mention here the ones that staff does support, which is number one, submission of the preliminary land development plan. Number two, plan orientation to due north. Number three, traffic impact assessment. Number five, landscape buffer strips. Number six, landscaping the perimeter buffer. And number nine, concrete curbing. But only at the building sidewalk. And that's, if you look here, this is sidewalk proposed along the side of the building. In order for them to get a curb reveal, they would actually have to lower the parking lot. So we, we agreed that that would make, not make sense to do that. So that way the parking lot will be flush with the sidewalk there. But that's the only place that staff felt that, that waiver should be granted is there at the building at the sidewalk. The three that it does not support is number four, which is the parking lot requirements. While we understand it's, it's easy to come in here and paint some lines and, and paint islands and so forth. There's a reason for the delineation of raised curbs. We've required that of all other redeveloped properties and, and we don't know or we haven't heard why this would be an exception to those other redeveloped properties. Then number seven, landscaping individual building site. Typically, as you guys all recall, typically they require, the ordinance requires landscaping around the front of the building. You know, a, a buffer between the sidewalk and the building. But if you also recall, and the board has approved this, they have waived that in the past. But in doing so, the developer showed additional landscaping to offset that at a different place on the property. So staff would support that provided that, that landscaping is provided and identified in a different area on the property. And then the last one is landscaping of the parking lots. Again, no one, if they don't have to, don't want to put a tree in a parking lot, but it's a requirement of the ordinance. And, and again, we don't know of any specific reasons or any hardships why that should not apply here as well.
I think just one question, Todd, on number three, the traffic impact assessment?
Yes.
So I guess that was included with the last plan, but then what, there's going to be an agreement to better understand the traffic there? What, what is that?
No, they, they just have to give a written statement to meet that requirement.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's no full-blown, blown study. Typically, from what we understand, and I think what we personally have observed, as township officials, is the fireworks generally five, maybe six days out of the year is really packed. And other days, there's lots of empty spaces.
I have a follow-up to that. There's two different ingress and egress roads that come in there. And so are you, are you planning to use both or prioritize the one on forest or the one that comes in off Elm, which is new?
Yeah, the way the traffic currently is out there, they could certainly just come in off of Elm, the, the new street. And or if they did come in off of Caprice, yes. Caprice, that, that's how the circulation is. I did have here, well, and then so here, yeah, currently there's a fence right across here, but that will be removed after this goes through. So you can see that access can come in right off, right off of here. This is the new road right here. Right here is where Elm is.
So are you planning to move your facility that's up at the top of the hill down to this building?
Facility on the other side of the road?
Yeah, yeah, it's up by the Loop Center?
And basically, we're going to consolidate the two buildings. We own the Sky King building in, into this.
Okay.
So it'll just be one Phantom Fireworks location.
Yeah, much bigger.
Right. Yeah, it's, it's, it's a big building that's out there, is obviously, you know, give them a lot of, a lot of space.
I personally was thinking the same thing that Todd just mentioned with staff. I know it's a hindrance to obviously rip up asphalt to get these islands and, and parking barriers put in. But I, I think it's almost a necessity for traffic flow to, to, to slow traffic down. Some landscaping is going to be required. And I think that's a, move that landscaping away from the building, get, if you can get more out by the buffer maybe, but I don't think there's anywhere to put it. I think the islands are a perfect spot for it.
And, and, and I agree, and I think Phantom would agree. I mean, at, at least what I'm hearing then is that the, the curbing would be eliminated up by the building. And that was the big thing. That was their major concern.
If it wouldn't be for the elevation difference, I think curbing should go by the building.
Yeah.
But people out there punting at tons and that'd be difficult.
Because it's so flat the way it is now. And the way the store is, I mean, here's where their cart access goes into the building. And this is just so flat, and that's why, that's why this is where the designated ADA parking spaces are then also. That, and because it's so flat, so yeah, if you go and then put curb in there and what have you, or even if it's depressed curb in some of those areas, you still have to push too far out in order to tie in with proposed grading. So I think the big advantage, I think yous are addressing it, that at least you would consider that waiver of that curbing by the building. And, and I think that if, if we need to put it out in the parking lot, I think Phantom wouldn't have any problems with that.
That's my opinion.
Yeah, follow up.
Other than that, I, I don't see any issues.
I think that doing the curbing around the building is, is pretty difficult, so I understand that. And I, I would expect that the parking spaces have the concrete, kind of like
Yep.
triangle at the front of all of them, sort of just the
Bumper blocks.
bumper blocks in front of all of them, so people can walk there without worrying about the car pulling in.
Right.
Okay.
I mean, we are proposing bumper blocks, but the rest of it's all open.
Right.
And they'll have adequate access.
I kind of agree with the two comments about the islands. If, if you don't have a little bit of kind of restriction and control of like, you park here and you leave this way, you'll have guys doing donuts in your wide open parking lot in the middle of the night. So, I don't know.
Yep.
Just thought.
Blaine, are they going to propose to put bollards where we're not going to make you put the curb along the building? Because if
There, there will be, and as you know, so out here, there's bollards all along this side right there, and that's for traffic control. And yes, I, I would say that yes, there will be, there'll be additional bollards put in along that sidewalk as well.
That happens a lot, so my, things are hitting the brake and hit the gas.
Yeah, and I can't, I can't see it on this side. There might even be a couple in that existing condition planned. I'm not sure, but, but yes, we can certainly put bollards in for, for additional protection.
Here is a image that Jason sent down, they asked me to have a
Oh, yeah, yeah. So I, I forgot about this. Yeah, I told him to send this down. And this, this way you can see the building and you can see how big it is. Here's the bollards on this side. You can see going the whole way out through. And this is a good picture because this is just recently been done when they put this drive in and you can see where the paving is. And again, you can see the paving that's up here. It's, it's really not bad, and it's just a shame to go in and tear all that out. And, and so we talked about it, but there you can see there is a couple bollards that's currently right there. But, but we'll make sure that if those got removed to give us sufficient more room, they would be moved outwards. I mean to note that we'll put bollards on the land, on, on this side as well as on the
On the other side.
The other side.
Any other questions? Then I propose that we act on the waivers that staff recommended first. And so that would be number one, two, three, five, six
Nine.
And nine, only at the building sidewalk.
Wait, wait.
Yeah. Alright, so I will make a recommendation that we recommend to the Board of Supervisors approval of those listed modification quest, requests with number nine being only at the building sidewalk. So is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, and then next we'll do the waivers that staff did not recommend, and they were four, seven. That, it, that is no considering that we would need to consider Um, that, it, that is no considering that, um, we would need to consider landscaping at another location. And then eight. Um, so does anybody have any comments on those, anything additional they want to bring up?
I think just so we're clear, I mean, it's just pretty much just the. The, um, the islands and the landscaping potentially in the islands. Everything else I think's okay.
Yeah, cause they're doing the landscaping along forest, which will be nice. And they're, you know, they're going to put in lighting in the whole parking lot. So it's really the islands.
So, so with your numbers then, like eight, I'm not, so what, what do we say on the individual building land site landscaping?
Well, that, that was the first motion that they've already made and they had mentioned nine, um, but only for around the building. I believe Sherri had mentioned that, the curbing around the building only.
Okay, okay.
All right, so does somebody want to make a motion on four, seven and eight?
I'll make a motion that, uh, with conditions met at the time, that, uh, we could pass that at this time to the zoning board for their decision.
To deny?
Pardon?
To deny?
Yes.
It, it would be to the supervisor's.
Pardon?
To the supervisors.
Yes, to the supervisors.
All right, and is there a second for that motion?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so I guess, are, are we good on that one now? Okay.
Yeah.
So then up next we have, um, the zoning hearing board and up, uh, we had Stephen and Amy Burns. So if.
Yep, thank you.
Hey, everyone, uh, I'm Attorney Mike Callum, I represent, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Burns in regards to their property of one forty-seven eighty-one Boyer Road. Uh, there's actually two, two separate issues. The first would be whether there's existing, uh, zoning violations. And then number two, whether or not we'd actually need a variance, um, to operate a distillery, which is basically taking agricultural products which are raised on the property and distilling it into, into liquor. So the, the first issue is whether there's actually a business being run here. There's no products being actively distilled, distilled on the property right now. Uh, he's not operating a business. There was the installation, I think of two tanks. He's in a position where he's ready to apply for a permit, but I believe there was a question as to whether there is, uh, a use that's permitted by right that would permit a distillery to be run on site. Now, mind you, this is not a, like a wine tasting, like you would have like Allegra or Naylor. This is purely taking the agricultural products that are grown on the farm and distilling them into, into spirits. So, uh, there's a couple of different places we could hang our hat on as a use permitted by right. The reason why I put a variance in the appeal was because my understanding is the township was concerned uh, that there wasn't a use that was listed in the agricultural zone that we could more or less hang our hat on, in which case we'd need a variance. Uh, I think that given the, what he's looking to do with the property, that we could argue that it is agricultural use based on the fact that it's dealing with an agricultural commodity such as, uh, apple cider press. If this was an apple farm and he wanted to install an apple cider press to make apple cider, is he manufacturing apple cider? Or is he operating an agricultural operation? There's a couple of different ways we could do that, either by the use that's permitted by right with the, um, within the definition of agriculture, which, uh, if you look at the definition of agriculture. The, um, I'm not sure if everybody has the zoning ordinance in front of them, if you want me to, to provide you with the, uh, definition of agriculture. Kind of long, so it might be good to have it in front of you. Not used to these high tech, uh, council chambers.
We're not either.
Do you have paper copies?
Sure.
I've got it right over there.
Hard for the audience to read, but the.
Yeah.
The members.
Members can see that now.
I still wouldn't mind having one to scribble one.
So as we know, under section four oh two, agriculture use permitted by right. And part of that is the production and preparation for market of crops, livestock and livestock products, which of course we all know that's what farms do. And the production harvesting and preparation for market use of agricultural agronomic, that goes through, uh, crops and commodities. Term also includes an enterprise that implements changes in production practices and procedures of crops, livestock, et cetera, or commodities. So the question is, is what is a commodity? And, uh, a commodity, well, is being defined as, um, anything that, that basically comes from the production of the farm. One of the issues that was brought up is this property is actually in, uh, agricultural conservation easement. And matter of fact, uh, Todd Ziegler was, uh, was nice enough to point this out to me that, hey, look, you better make sure that you don't have deed restrictions. We're all familiar with Moon Dancer Farm, what happened? They had zoning approval, but they had deed restrictions that prevented them from operating a winery. So it didn't make much sense to get township approval if you have a deed restriction that prevents you from operating a distillery. And I actually have, um, the approval letter here, uh, where they did actually, uh, approve the distillery on Preserve Farm because, um, the distilling of whiskey is recognized as an agricultural product. And I can, uh, provide copies of this letter as well. So not only did that eliminate the concern about a deed restriction, but apparently folks who obviously have a vested interest in ensuring that this property remains ag, um, also view this as, uh, agricultural product. Because, I mean, that's how you make whiskey. I mean, I'm not an expert on it, but my client, Mr. Burns could certainly explain that, that, you know, you, you use the agricultural products to, 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 to produce these, uh, distilled spirits. So. Did, did you guys have a copy of it?
If we can get one just here for the table.
Thank you, sir.
And matter of fact, that's one of the, um, in the deed, one of the permitted acts is the processing uh, of or retail marketing of such crops. The processing being obviously the distilling, taking the grain and distilling it into liquor. Matter of fact. So I was looking for them. Whiskey is considered agricultural product under USDA. Um, they've recognized it in January twenty twenty-one. And they also. Uh, the World Trade Organization is also, uh, classifies agricultural products, uh, to, to include this as well. So it, it, this isn't an odd interpretation to say, well, whiskey isn't that, that's manufacturing. That's not a farm commodity, but it, but it is. And we all may, you may recall from history class, the whiskey rebellion. Farmers found it was easier to turn their corn into whiskey and ship it. And they didn't want to pay the tax on it. And actually George Washington, one of the, uh, first axes, uh, in the new government was to lead, you know, true federal troops, uh, to suppress the whiskey rebellion. That's what that was about. Farmers find it was easier to turn their crops into whiskey and ship it down the river than it was, you know, to, to ship corn down the river. The other thing is this is obviously going to be obviously less intrusive, uh, you know, use of the property. You know, obviously there's, uh, we're not planning to use, have members of the public there and sort of that thing. Although certainly with winery and that type of definition, there's people who do, do, uh, tasting and that sort of thing. That's not what we're looking to do. We're looking to basically just take the commodity and, you know, the agricultural commodity converted into, you know, into whiskey or liquor. The other alternative is accessory use, which is listed in four oh two, which would, um, defines. Yeah, farm processing establishment, which is actually an accessory use to permitted principal uses. So even if you say, well, wait a second, okay, I got the growing of the, the grains to make the liquor. I got how that's agriculture, but now you're processing it into some other type of a product versus turning it into ethanol or something like that. Well, the other alternative would be to, um, is to seek a permit under, um, farm processing establishment, which is defined. A commercial enterprise consisting of one or more buildings or structures, either permanent or temporary, designed to use primarily for processing agricultural commodities, such, but is not limited to, dairies, grain mills, slaughterhouses and wineries. And you could see why winery is kind of in there as well, because that's what you're doing, you're processing grapes into wine. So, you know, essentially it's the same thing. Now, interestingly enough, and I referenced this in my appeal as to the, the violation, that if you're going to say, okay, well, agriculture is the overlying umbrella, but within it, there's specific things, brewery, distillery, winery. But the only problem is it, there aren't those specific uses in the zoning ordinance. There's winery, but there's no brewery, there's no distillery. So being as there's no specific use that the township could say, oh, wait a second, this isn't ag, this isn't farm processing establishment, it's a winery, or it's a distillery, or it's a brewery, or, or one of these other things that are processing the crops that are grown on the farm. The, the only problem is there isn't one for breweries or in this case, distilleries, only for wineries. Uh, and the winery seems to imply that you could do tasting and that sort of thing. Once again, we're not doing that, we're merely converting the agricultural product into, into liquor. For consumption offsite. But.
Go ahead. May I interject? It seems like we're going off on a tangent here from what the violation notice was. The violation notice was issued because it was brought to the township's attention that there was a very well, nice designed website called Chairman's Distillery, um, that identified this property. The barn, uh, said coming this fall, had days of the week listed, hours listed and so forth. Had interior photos of the barn showing it fully remodeled, both floors with a bar and so forth. Um, so that's why the violation notice was set. I'm, and, and maybe I'm the only one that's missing it, but I hear you keep talking about the production of, of the product and processing the product and everything else. But I hear you talking about what the real violation is here is creating a commercial establishment by having the tasting and, and the room open. Cause in fact, the website mentioned it was going to have food and.
But, but none of that, as far as I know, was never done.
So probably just, someone probably just did a Google search for distilleries near me or something, I don't know. But, uh, I don't know how they came about it. But, but that was the purpose of the violation because that was, that was evident that the building was rehabbed and was intended to be a bar, um, or some kind of establishment. And, and the, any other thing I just want to mention before, um, you, you move on? You'd mentioned, does everyone have a copy of the December twentieth letter from Ag Preservation? You can copy that. Um, you know, the second paragraph talks about, you know, as you explained, distilling of whiskey is recognized as an agricultural product. You anticipate the distilling to utilize the majority of the existing barn and that no land will be taken out of production for this use. Uh, agricultural production and processing, including but not limited to wheat, barley, rind corn, is permitted on preserved farmland, the production. And it talks about, you know, how much you have to use and so forth. But then when you get into the third paragraph, if I'm reading this correctly, they gave permission and granted authority for you to do the, the growing and the processing, but not the tasting and having the place open to the public. Cause it goes on to say, please keep in mind that if your plans change, the more, board may need to approve those changes. If the barn slash distillery becomes open to the public, this would be seen as a rural enterprise that would require the board's approval. No lands may be taken out of crop production or pasture land to accommodate the rural enterprise such as parking, bathrooms, attic, et cetera. Um, and then your farm conservation plan will need to be updated if farm operation changes from hay to grain production. So I guess, I, I hear you talking about the production side of it, but not what the violation notice was set for. So I'm not sure what the appeal is.
Well, that, that raises a good question. I have to file an appeal or it's deemed a violation.
Correct.
If you don't file an appeal, you're, you're, you're cooked. So whether the, the fact that you didn't actually open it to the public or actually distill a drop of liquor, you know, you can't challenge it at that point. Can't say, well, Judge Sweeney, I, I didn't distill any liquor. There was never, no, no members of the public ever set foot on my property. Well, it doesn't matter, you had thirty days to appeal this and you didn't appeal it. You're deemed violated.
Right.
Maybe you should have brought that up. Maybe you should have brought that up to the zoning hearing board. So that's what we're doing. A, a drop of liquor has not been distilled. Not a single member of the public has been on the property. Now, if there was L and I issues or U C C issues, then, you know, that's, that's, that's a different issue. But I think all of that could be potentially mitigated if we can obtain the permit and begin distilling. So that's, that's the second half of it. There's two parts of it. There's the violation, but then also are we going to be able to distill, not, not have members of the public in, but, but distill, you know, liquor on the premises and obtain the permit by right?
So, so Mike, if based off your testimony, you know, I think we can agree that there is not a violation occurring currently. So we could, we could drop that. You know, but if there's any violation, then the variance wouldn't be needed. I don't think we're going to argue the fact that you're not allowed to, you know, distill. You know, we agree that's an agricultural operation that you are allowed to do. Okay? Our concern was based off of Mr. Burns's, you know, website and then stuff that he presented to us in the meeting that we had here, what his intent was. And from what we saw from that, it looked like a full blown commercial enterprise that needed land development and uses that were not allowed in the ag district. So. Yeah, so I think, I just think, just so the planning commission understands, you know, you met with us after we kind of laid everything out for you, what should have happened. And you've now pivoted and you're going down a different avenue. Is essentially what's happening.
Correct.
So, okay. So, I mean, is it okay to drop the violation?
I mean, I, I think the township would agree that the violation doesn't exist today. At the time when it was issued, we do believe it did because the, the website was up fully and functional and, and Mr. Burns did come in and did give us his business plan, which included, you know, having the public in and food and he put restroom, public restrooms in and so forth, so. But if you're now telling us that that's not your, your plan and you did take the website down immediately. So I think.
There's a caveat, there's some things, you know, we, we still have concerns, okay? If you're going to move forward with a distillery, there's still zoning approvals that you do have to meet, okay? And things need to be spelled out to the T. My main concern, I told you, was the septic situation. You're going to create a industrial waste, okay? Have you contacted D E P to get their input as far as what you need to do for that? It, it's not residential strength wastewater, okay? So, so like I can handle residential strength wastewater. So you're not going to have any type of byproduct that you're going to. But that holding tank has to be permitted through D E P. So you are going to create a byproduct that you have to remove. So by state law, you have to get a D E P industrial wastewater permit, okay? So you do have to contact them and it more than likely will be a holding tank that you will fill up and have a pumper come. So, but you do need that permit. You can't get the zoning approval to do all the other stuff unless you have a septic permit. So that's the first permit you have to obtain. So, okay. My other concern was like if you were going to do warehousing and stuff, that's not permitted in that district. So as you make your whiskey, what are you going to do with it? But I'm saying like how, are you going to store it on site in warehouses or are you going to ship it to another location and store it somewhere else?
But wouldn't age there really be, aging is not storage, it's, it's part of.
Processing, it's part of the processing, yeah.
You could ship it out before it's aged.
Yeah, and, and again, part of this is because we don't have anything in our zoning ordinance that spells all this stuff out. So we kind of need to go through this process to kind of get a mutual understanding of how you're going to operate.
And that's why when we got to be looking at it in terms of the distilling end of it, we kind of were able to determine that we felt it was agricultural. You know, if it ever got to what he had detailed before, it'd probably be done off site, you know, with tasting or, you know, was the place that had the, what was the winery that had the place in downtown Shrewsbury?
Seven Valleys Vineyard?
Something like that. Like downtown. But, yeah, something like that potentially.
Seven, Seven Valleys Vineyard.
Yeah.
Yeah, Seven Valleys, yep. So, yeah, that, it, it would, if, it would ever come to that where there's no immediate plans for that, it would probably be something like that where it would be off site. So the, the game plan is not to have.
That, that one was operating not legal either. So that's why it's no longer there.
The Shrewsbury Village District is, is, we could write books about it.
I don't think we're fighting, you know, on the fact that it's an ag operation and an ag process. It's after the fact, what happens then, you know? It can't turn into a commercial establishment, so.
Well, and, and certainly we would, i- if we were trying to obtain approval for that, we would go through the necessary channels. And, and initially that's kind of the direction we were going, which probably.
Well, my other concern, I'm not the building code person, but, you know, that building was torn completely down to the ground and rebuilt as an occupiable building with new permits. So that is a concern separate from this. So has that, anything been done with that or? That building was in bad shape thirty years ago when I bailed hay in it, so.
They are.
Yep, yep, yeah.
But I, I can tell you, D C C S, the building code official, he's, he will be following up, but he wanted to see where things went here with the zoning aspect of it first.
So I guess my question is, as it, as it pertains to the proposed use today, not the proposed use months ago. It seems like you guys agree that this would be a use permitted by right, that we don't need a variance or anything like that. So, I mean, certainly if he can apply for the permit and then of course, obviously you're going to have to have any type of L and I and any other types of approvals, D E P and what have you. There's obviously liquor, you know, licensing, which a lot of that's been obtained.
I, I would say I would be comfortable to the fact that, you know, he can grow his hops, he can process his hops, he can distill his hops and he can bottle his hops. And that's about it. Were the publics involved coming to the property to taste? I think Ag Preservation probably has to answer that question for you first. I'm not sure the township's in a position to decide that yet.
For tastings?
No, we're not, we're not asking township to.
Yeah, I mean, as soon, as soon as you have the general public come into a building, it's not an ag building anymore. And if you have someone working in full shifts in a building, it's not an ag building. So, you know, you don't get the ag exemption for that, so. Just, you know.
No, and I, I understand that. And of course, this gets back to what we were saying about having definition, you know, you have definition for winery because when usually we think about a place where members of the public would come, usually you think about wine or you think about nail or ale gray, you know, there's the Seven Valleys, you know? And, but distilleries and, well, now breweries seem to be taken off in this area. So that's probably another reason why, maybe not for distilleries, but next thing to work on be, you know, breweries.
What, what I found in my research in York County, where most of these breweries are, they're, they're considered restaurants because they provide food, sit down service tables, and they're not in ag districts. They're usually some kind of commercial district.
But, you know, probably a lot of those also are not growing the product, you know? This is novel in that the product's actually being grown on the property, which I kind of thought's a kind of cool business plan.
I have a question about that, since you're covering that. I saw in the waiver request that at least fifty percent of the, of the gross raw product has to be produced, you know, by the farm owner. But then it also says that the property is really unusable for anything except maybe a distillery. So how are you going to grow the, the product? That's according to the, so long as at least fifty percent of the inputs are grown by the farm operator?
Well, the, the, well, in regards to the variance, the most profitable, highest and best used probably would be a distillery. I don't know, probably. You could probably attest to this is, you know, you don't make a lot of money. You make probably what, a couple hundred bucks an acre farming and, and to, to produce, you know, any type of money off of property, it's, you must really have to use agricultural products. It might really be the highest and best use. But, yeah, it, that was the game plan is that it would, you know, that there would be grains grown on the property and then distilled. That's obviously, that gets back to my whiskey rebellion analysis. You make much more money dollar for dollar on an acre of land, you know, turning it into something like this product than you would just selling it for feed corn or something like that.
Okay, so you're comfortable anticipating that you'll be able to grow, you know, fifty percent of the barley on this land?
Yes, and it says it can be on my land or.
Or other land that you bring in?
Under my.
Yeah, okay, that's what I was thinking. Okay, I agree.
So, so I had brought up the, the issue with the water.
Yeah.
Yeah, so are you able to use your own well water?
Yeah, so, so nitrates does not enter the distillation process.
Okay, yeah, my, my concern for you was if you were going to have the tasting room and you had a clientele that asked for a glass of water, that glass of water had to meet public drinking water standards. So, and with the nitrate levels in that area, I didn't see how that was going to be feasible unless you put seventy thousand dollar wastewater treatment facility or a water treatment facility in, so.
So, I guess, so procedurally, then where do we want to go? Do we want to, if, if there's no violation, I really don't need the appeal per se. And it doesn't sound like I would have never, that I would need a variance anyway. So if the violation is moot and the variance issue is moot, then it would seem that we wouldn't really need a zoning hearing board hearing.
I, I might suggest that, that this board takes notice that, that the property is not currently under violation and the township has taken the position that they'll withdraw the violation notice. And at this time, the, the variance does not appear necessary based on the presented uses that were presented here. And then you can make a decision whether you want it here for the zoning hearing board or to confirm that.
I, I, I think if that's, if that township's position in regards is documented, as you indicated, I think then we are in pretty good shape. But like I said, the main purpose of the appeal is to protect his rights to prevent from incurring civil penalties at the magisterial district judge for zoning violations which are not occurring. Alternatively, if the township said no, the whole thing, the whole thing from A to Z is a violation, that then we could obtain approval for the use, but it seems like we need neither.
And I, I don't want to encourage you to withdraw the, the variance in case the zoning hearing board doesn't, isn't seeing it the same way as the planning commission, but I think it would make sense for them to take notice and send that, that message in the minutes to the zoning hearing board.
I, I, I would think so. Now, if I withdraw the variance without prejudice, I mean, certainly it's, I, I could come back later and, and it sounds like the township's willing to issue a permit based on the uses identified.
Yeah, my main concern is the sewage side of things. I need to see something from D E P that says that you've addressed that, you know, that concern of mine, so.
And also the building will have to get a use of occupancy permit and, and fully inspected and everything by the building code official.
Mika, can the township work on language? Since we don't have anything in zoning ordinance for distilleries or breweries, can we work on? Because obviously that, we can't envision every need.
Yeah, no, I, I think that, that, I think that's a question of the law, you know, there's a law responding to the market.
All right, so what I'll do is, the, the minutes from the planning commission, when did you anticipate that they would? Would we have, well, we need it before the zoning hearing board anyway, so.
Yeah, typically what we do is a memo to the zoning hearing board on this particular case.
Okay.
And state what the recommendation was by the planning commission or in this case would be a statement.
Okay.
Yeah, I misspoke when I said that.
Well, I, yeah, they're kind of, but.
It would be in the minutes as well, but.
So, okay, so then I think then procedurally where we're at, then he would apply for a permit. And then to answer your question is to preservation, you know, hey, make sure you're, you're preserving your rights would be if there would be a denial of the permit for whatever reason, then that would give me additional ground. Right to appeal that denial. Which sounds like we're pretty much on the same sheet of music. And we never took the position you don't need, you know, use in occupancy or, or these other approvals. That's never been our position at all. We just wanted to make sure we could, that the use itself was permitted.
So do we, we don't have to make a motion or anything on the letter, the memo?
I, I would, so for preparation, for purposes of preparing the minutes, I think that you could, you can make a motion that your recommendation to the zoning hearing board is that you're taking notice that there isn't a current violation and the township is withdrawing the violation and that a, a variance isn't needed based on the proposed use from the facts that were presented here.
I'll make a motion as said.
As said.
And is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
All right, thanks guys.
Thank you, appreciate it. It's good seeing you all again.
Thank you.
All right, and then up next, we have Christopher Neal.
Hi there. Hi there, good evening. My name is Janie Catherman. I'm with the law firm of Barley Snyder. Here tonight on behalf of the applicant, who is here in attendance, Chris Neal, wave your hand. And Mark McGrekey, I hope I'm pronouncing that right, Mark with Pantera, who prepared the concept plan. Despite what is said about my generation, I still like paper copies of things. I know you got a high tech system here, but there's not much here. It's really just a tax, tax map image, Google Earth image. Just find helpful to kind of give a real life picture of what it looks like there. And then our, our concept plan that was submitted with. Alrighty, so the, the property in question here is lot number seventeen on Elm Drive. It's about three point eight, give or take acres, just off the right hand side of Route eighty three as you're driving north. You can see it there in the tax map highlighted or outlined in the blue. It is part of the interchange district and it is surrounded on all sides by interchange district properties. It does not directly abut any residential properties, which is useful information as I, as I go through this here. Applicant intends on building a warehouse for commercial industrial fabrication, contracting welding specific, and storage specifically for HVAC related products. So although to me that sounds like what I think of for light fabric, uh, light industrial, excuse me, and light manufacturing, it, it doesn't, I guess, quite fit into the definition in your ordinance. And, and it's the township's position that. And, and it's the township's position that it's not exactly right, um, so for that reason, we are here requesting a use not provided for, uh, and, and the process for doing that will be a special exception. So, um, as you're aware, your ordinance lays out certain criteria or points of consideration for a special exception. So I'm really briefly just gonna touch on those, and then I'll open it up to the board if you have specific site-related, uh, questions of the applicant. Um, I'll then, I guess we'll, we'll handle this, Todd, you know, the special exception first, assuming that that has a favorable, favorable recommendation, we'll then go into the variance, okay? Um, and then, yeah, we'll, we'll get into probably more of the site-specific details on the concept plan with Mark, uh, if we get to, when we get to the variance. But for now, again, we're looking for a special exception for a use not provided for, keeping in mind that the intended, the proposed use is, um, commercial, industrial, fabrication, welding, construction, storage for HVAC materials. So the, uh, the first factor that we should look at here is the purpose, and is, is the intended purpose or the intended use consistent with your comp plan? We do feel that it is, uh, because it recognizes the appropriateness of existing land and its potential uses. In our mind, this is an ideal property for, uh, what the applicant is using and intending to use it for. Um, it's surrounded by similarly situated properties, um, similarly structured properties and uses. It will create additional tax revenue, and as I mentioned previously, uh, it is not immediately adjacent to any residential districts. Um, so we feel that there will be minimal to no disruption for, uh, for residential properties. Next, with compatibility, we do believe that the proposed use will be minimal, uh, in terms of its, its pollution to things like light, noise, um, natural resources. Noise will be kept at a very low, uh, level. Lighting will be consistent with other warehousing use, uses, uh, and will also comply with all zoning and SADO requirements. Suitability, the site is suitable for the proposed use as already mentioned. Surrounding the, uh, site are uses such as chemical engineering services, tool manufacturer, sporting goods store, crane services, tire shop, all of which are arguably probably more intensive than what applicant is looking to do with the property here. And as I mentioned, uh, those, those uses are situated in similar warehouse-type structures. Serviceability, uh, we believe that there is public sewer and water available from the street. Um, and, and Mark can certainly talk more about that and the proposed location for a hookup. Um, and then, of course, applicant would apply with all drainage and sewage requirements of the, of the ordinances. As far as accessibility, traffic to and from the site will be very low. We're not intending any customers, um, no, no members of the public coming to buy equipment or merchandise of any kind. Uh, majority of the use, I would say, would be for storage, certainly, uh, the applicant can, can confirm that, but a large portion of, of the use will be for storage. There will be a small number of what I'll call employees, um, at this point, it's very prelim- preliminary, but I think the applicant is thinking maybe three to four, um, and not on-site all days of the week. The, uh, the current rendition of applicant's plan includes twenty-four parking spaces, which I think, based on the testimony I just gave, is, is more than adequate for the proposed use, given that there is no, no public intended to be coming to the property, and maybe three or four employees, uh, some days of the week. Of course, as the process goes along, applicant will comply with all provisions of your zoning and subdivision land development ordinances. At this point, I'm gonna pause and see if there are any questions, uh, of the applicant related to what he's intending to do with the property and the specific use itself, assuming that we make a favorable recommendation on the special exception. Uh, we then have a, kind of a second portion of the presentation for a requested variance on the site. So at this point, are there any questions of Mr. Neal?
No, but maybe Todd or Keith can give us a little more background here. I'm not understanding why it doesn't fit into.
There, there's nothing spelled out in the ordinance that specifically pegs him. He's kinda like in between a contractor's office and a, and a heavy industrial use. So he, he's not making the raw materials, he's getting it shipped in, and then he's cutting it, sawing it, welding it. So, uh, he, he's also gonna be like a contractor where he was gonna fabricate the stuff on-site and then take it to job sites. So it's kinda like an intermix of a bunch of things, and we just felt that to cover him and the township, a special exception would, would best benefit everybody, so.
Yeah, there, there, I believe, was three different definitions where there was, and all three of those uses are permitted in the zone.
Yeah.
It's just that there was, as the attorney stated, there's no one particular use that clearly defined his use. So there was a little bit out of this stuff, this use, a little bit out of that one, so, yeah.
Yeah, it seemed to me like they're doing exactly what all the other warehouses up there are doing, so. Probably, probably even less.
So he need, he needed the variance for the CEA.
Yeah.
And we felt since we're going to the zoning hearing board, it's just better we protect him.
Yep.
And the township, and just get it all spelled out off the same shot, so, so. I mean, to be honest, we don't have any heartburn about what he wants to do, but it just needs.
I don't, I don't either. It's a perfect spot for it.
Yeah, yeah.
Other than maybe the CEA area.
Yeah.
I mean, I'll simply make a recommendation to, um, the zoning hearing board to, um, approve the, uh, the zoning ord- uh, zoning use. Exception.
Special exception.
Special exception.
We have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Helen's pretty easy.
Excellent. All right, so now with that taken care of, uh, and as just mentioned, the property does lie within a CEA area, um, requiring a buffer due to the fact that, uh, about, just about halfway through the property, and I think you can see it better on the, uh, Google Earth image that I showed you, as well as the printout of the plan, where that stream, or I guess I'll call it a, a water course, um, lies. Because of that, we need a hundred-foot buffer on both sides of that water course. And not only do we need the hundred-foot buffer, uh, just as a, a standard repairian buffer, but in addition, section twenty-seven thirteen oh four two A requires additional buffering to account for slopes on the property. So when you, when you take into account the slopes, the, the buffer actually, it leaves about maybe sixty-two, sixty-five feet of the property from the road back or into the property that, that would be developable. Um, so the yellow shading, if, Mark, you gave everyone a copy of that. The yellow shading that you can see on the plan would be, assuming that we were to abide by the CEA, I'll call it the CEA slope buffer, the yellow portion would be where we could develop the property if the, if the buffers were left in, in place. So applicant's request then is for a seventy-five-foot buffer on the roadside of the waterway, um, with no additional slope buffer then. The one hundred-foot buffer on the back side of the property would be maintained at a hundred feet. So we're only requesting it on one side, and again, we are requesting that that buffer would be made seventy-five feet. Um, again, as you know, certain criteria or, or, um, considerations to take into account here with a variance. Unique physical circumstances, as I just said, stream or waterway runs right through the center of the property, um, leaving what's left pretty unbuildable. The, uh, the hardship was not created by the applicant. I believe it was a nineteen seventy-nine subdivision plan that created the lots, um, so obviously not created by the applicant. We don't feel that it will resolve in any, result in any increased, um, flood heights, threats to public safety or public expense. We don't feel it will create any nuisance to surrounding property owners, um, or alter the essential character of the surrounding area. And we do finally feel that if authorized, it represents the mini- minimum variance that would be needed, uh, in order to afford relief here. And not just for applicant's use, but likely for any of the permitted uses in the interchange district. Um, I, I'm not sure what anyone could do there without some sort of modification with those buffers. And again, I'll certainly open it up to questions. Specifics on the calculation of the buffers, not my forte. So Mark would be much better suited to explain how he came up with those figures, if you have questions on that.
Phil did the subdivision in nineteen seventy-nine?
Seventy-three, I think.
You said seventy-nine, the, the plant I pulled is in seventy-three.
Seventies.
Yeah, so just, just quickly, the, we, we saw that it was developed, the plant, or, I'm sorry, the lot was created in seventy-three. The zoning ordinance was adopted initially in nineteen seventy-six.
Oh.
But with that said, and even more importantly, the critical environmental area section of the ordinance did not take effect until two thousand and ten.
I didn't think so.
So this.
So the or- the ordinance is creating the hardship here.
Yeah. Yeah.
So.
And, and as, I've been on these lots many a times. I know there's a small water course down there, but it's, is it even running water? At all times?
It, it, at times it dries up. About the only time you get some water is if you have a good, good downpour, yeah. It, it's.
It's not really even called a stream or a creek, it's.
Well, by, by all, by all ordinance it is. But, but it's not one of those that would create a flooding, correct, flooding issue.
And, and we've had to grant the same variance for adjacent properties already.
And it's gonna be kinda the same thing, it's a good down the roof.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. We've had to do this hardship thing on these old lots. It looks like the stream is on the back of the property, and the parking lots don't, don't really face that direction.
So if, Todd, if this is, if, if this is a spring or something, could you put tile on there to, to relocate that, or? It would still be considered.
I think the way, lay of the land you.
The, the, it's such a valley.
Yeah.
I mean, everything in that valley runs right there. That's a natural drain. I mean, you'd have to do some serious.
Right, that's gonna be.
Yeah.
I guess this will be part of the land development plan, but I think more importantly, it's just the stormwater. It's catching that stormwater off the roof in the parking lots to, to capture it and clean it.
Yeah, and we've already had a conversation with the, the potential developer about stormwater, probably putting something under the parking lots, but that'd all be addressed under land development.
And a little, and a little note to note, just disturbances beyond the back of the building.
Yeah, that's seventy-five feet there.
Yeah.
Staff supports the variance, uh.
Well, any additional questions?
We're kinda doing your work for you guys.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
All right, well, I'll make a motion to recommend the various requests to the zoning hearing board. Is there a second?
I'll second then.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're doing the work, Keith, but you're not getting a cut of it.
Come on.
Got a bad reputation, by the way.
All right, and then there's no new or old business, uh, the pending plan report is attached. Um, are there any planning commission comments? No, all right, no correspondence, and so I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting. Is there a second?
A second then.